All right, it's seven o'clock, so we will call the meeting to order and we can go with roll call when you're ready.
Barkle.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Kettering.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Weiss.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
All right, everybody had a chance to go over the minutes from the last meeting. Unless there's any changes or amendments to the previous minutes, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to prove the previous meetings minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right. Are there any items to be added to the agenda for tonight? Okay, seeing none, there's no changes. I need a motion to approve the current agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, have motion at second. All in favor, say aye. Post. Right. Then we can start with the conflict of interest declarations. Kathy?
None.
Chris Barkle, none.
Don Getering, none.
Sherry Hoffman, none.
Matt Evans, none.
Lauren Nelson, none.
Right. So now the first agenda item is set for seven oh five. So we have a few minutes as usual. I guess since it's more procedural than anything, Bill, was there any update from state's attorney or anything about different conditions that we can put on rezones and all that?
Yep, I spoke to state's attorney and he said the types of conditions we're talking about would not be appropriate and probably would not hold up in law, in a court of law. His recommendation was either approve it or reject it as it's presented.
Okay, so even though in our ordinance it says that we can make conditions on the rezone, he didn't have any specifics of what type of conditions would be.
No, but I, we talked, excuse me, it says appropriate conditions and I mentioned some of the ones that were brought up and he said they probably weren't enforceable in a court of law. He didn't give me specifics of what could, when you're talking about a permitted use. You know, you can't restrict somebody from building a permitted use or doing a permitted use on property they own. So his advice was either approve it or don't approve it without conditions and it'll go on to the county commission for their decision.
Okay. Thanks. All right, being seven oh five, we can go on to the first agenda item. Bloom conditional use permit applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow short-term rentals in a low-density residential district. Per Article six, section six oh nine, said property is legally described as block seven. Deer Run subdivision is platted in book S eighteen, page three twenty-six. Except track A of block seven, Deer Run subdivision is platted in book S twenty, page one, Yankton County, South Dakota, less highways and roads. The E nine one one address is four three, three five four, three hundred and tenth Street, Yankton, South Dakota. And is there somebody here to speak on this conditional use permit? Is that it?
I guess I am.
Yep, come on up and state your name for the record and tell us about the project. Come up to the speaker here.
My name's Cole Blum. I want to do short-term rentals of this property. I don't know what more I really have to add to that.
Guess is it gonna be like an Airbnb type thing or?
Essentially, that would be the idea. In hopes being able to cater to people like traveling with horses because it has got facilities for that, but not necessarily that always being the case.
Okay, and then I guess based on map and what was on packet, it says that there's a few buildings on the property that aren't.
There's a barn and a house.
Okay.
And what's your definition of short term?
I mean, I guess depends on how long they want to rent it for, but presumably times under a month, I would think.
How do you get in and out?
Well, you can go three hundred and tenth like to the west and connect to fifty or like, and then go to the north up to fifty or to the east and then go to four thirty-four and either go to Kaiser Road hit four thirty-five and choose from there, or you can go north to highway fifty.
Do you have a driveway?
Yeah. It, I think this photo is probably a few years old before real driveway or, excuse me, before the house was like, that was originally just like a garage. They added on a house and then a barn behind it. So the driveway goes close enough to straight out from the house.
And I guess you said it'd be like boarding for animals and stuff, so you've got fencing and.
Yeah, there's fencing and that sort of thing already there.
Do you have any comments from any neighbors?
I have not. Oh, I guess it appears there, there is.
Okay, I'll give you a chance to talk on it.
And you live in the south?
I, I do not live there.
Oh, you don't live there?
No.
Good.
Again, put up any special signage or anything to designate the property? Is that one for renters instead of neighbors?
I, I don't fully understand.
Just basically if you're gonna have rental property there, so that renters, when they're coming in and out.
There's fences on both sides.
Yeah, so they know your property separated from.
Yeah, there's fences on both sides of the property so that it's clearly distinguished.
Well, I think that meets most of the requirements or all that I see here. Is there any other questions from board?
Edmund.
Alright, thanks, Cole.
Thank you.
All right, anybody from the audience wish to speak on this CUP, come on up and state your name for the record.
My name is Andrea. My mom, I live in the house just to the west of the property at four three three four eight, three hundred and tenth Street. And so right off the bat, when he said horse trailers.
Can you point to that, can you?
Um, I'm just that house with the curvy driveway in that triangular.
Over here?
Yep, yep, that's me. So my biggest concern is this road is a minimum maintenance road and it's been labeled this for quite some time now. And so when he says horses and that means horse trailers. My husband, we've been out there for over twelve years at this point. We maintain that road, like we're the ones having to grade it, that kind of stuff, like the county is not maintaining this road as of currently, it's labeled minimum maintenance. So it's kind of why I came tonight, because I also wanted to know if like campers are gonna be allowed to park out in there or if they'll be able to put non-permanent structures out there like little tiny homes type things like that, when you talk short-term rental, once it's been approved, what are they all allowed to do with the permit, once it's there? I'm a little concerned with noise levels with people coming in when they're on vacation and I live next door. That kind of stuff, so, and then when he says that there's access to the west, that becomes a private road that is maintained by a private subdivision and I know with the tower that is straight across the road south of us. That tower, any of their stuff is not allowed to use that private road, so just a stipulation that way too, as far as trailers and people coming in and out of that. They don't like all that kind of stuff on that road over there. So I know that's been an issue for those people to farther west of us in the past. So those are my questions, I guess.
Okay. Go ahead.
As far as what else they can do, their CUP is just for church and rentals for that house. If they wanted to bring anything else in, they'd have to go through the CUP process again and modify it or do something different. So they couldn't bring, you know, campers out there to live in or sleep in tiny homes or anything like that.
You couldn't have people staying in the house and then their friend comes over in an RV and parks there?
No, that's not allowed in any, any district except for a campground. And even if you own the property, you're not supposed to, you know, stay in a camper overnight, so.
Doesn't the ordinance say two or more campers?
No, you're not allowed to stay in a camper. You may be able to have two campers, but we changed the ordinance. It used to be you could get a, have it for, I think, two weekends a year or something like that. And we eliminated that at the last round of changes. So you're not allowed to have any campers on your property camping unless you're in a certified campground.
Right, is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this CUP? Seeing none, I will close public comment for discussion.
Wasn't three ten, that street, wasn't that discussed at open mic at the county commission meeting? This last time, wasn't there somebody who came during open forum, what is it called? You know, open, I call it open mic, but it's not, it's public comment, thank you. And they were talking about three hundred and tenth Street and just the condition of it and was looking at, wondering if the county could do more with maintaining it. I'm pretty sure because I listened, I watched that meeting or listened to it.
Used to be on the planning zoning board, came in.
Oh, yeah, Doug Heavley.
Yeah, I didn't catch the name.
Doug Heavley, he lives, he lives out in that area.
But just talking about the, how busy that is out there on three tenth and just the, it's, there's a sign that says minimum maintenance or something like that. So I was gonna get out there and drive out there the other day, but I didn't get around to it.
This, the property to the right of the blue. That, yes, that was is that just been so older?
Is that, it's old?
Yeah.
Not that I'm worried about. This property that we're talking about used to belong to Matt Winsand. I believe. So it was sold within the last year. I don't know about the other property.
That's Matt's in the blue.
Yes, the one that Cole Blum Blum's own now.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Now I got it.
So three ten, how was that maintained? Okay, and then is, okay, and then is, you said the other, the other, what the other access was private, it was a private drive?
Cedar Hills Road is private road.
I don't have my, my road book, but I'll take that word for it.
Yeah, I believe we've talked about that in the past, but I guess with the private road, I feel that is a reasonable condition that the traffic would, would have to go east till it gets to, is that four thirty-four?
Yep. And then go north or south, is that correct? North to fifty or south, curve around.
I'd say north to fifty is the shortest route to get to state highway, it would be in the designated route.
Yeah, or, you know, it comes down around here, but I know this road is also, this goes down to Kaiser Road, right?
Yeah, that's quite a few more miles.
Yeah, I know there's an issue with that one too. Whether or not you can force them to take that is another story.
Well, you put a map on your website. And then tell them you can't get a horse trailer on any other road.
Yeah, I'm sure if they're gonna bring a horse trailer, they're gonna want to take a nicer road.
So the driveway for this goes straight south then? To three ten, right, correct?
Essentially, it kind of like has a little bit of a curve.
Okay. Pretty much.
Like in line with the road.
Okay, sounds good, okay.
So what was your intention when you bought this property? From Mr. Winsand?
I potentially lived there, I can clearly know, but.
I like it, it's nice. How many acres are there?
I believe it's just over seventeen.
Seventeen?
Guess the only big issue I'd see with it is the road maintenance, basically, that's being done by the people that are living on the road right now. I would say that you'd have to share in the cost of maintaining the road and obviously you're gonna want to make it passable for renters to get there.
And Mr. Blum, you understand absolutely no campers?
Yeah.
Did Mr. Winsand finish his, what do they call it, barn? House schnoz or?
Chels.
Chels.
Yeah, that's the main residence.
I think it looks that way, but it's a house. It just kind of has the look of a shop, but not really, it's not a shop. There's a barn behind it and the house, it looks in that same style.
Chelses have taken on a new meaning recently. It used to be a big shop with a little living quarters. Now it's just a big house that looks like a barn. So the garage is still a little thing and the rest is living.
I guess my concern is the road. You know, making sure that we take ownership, you know, if we have people coming in and out, that we are part of the solution of keeping the road open and well-maintained. Plus two, you said the fencing, is the fencing in good condition and it's very clearly marked? Because that's the other thing, if you look at the map, it's, you're not very far from quite a few homes and stuff. And so just, you know, if you have people coming from who knows where, that they're very clear that this is your property, this is where they need to be.
On the east side, it's, that's the road and it appears that my neighbors just put up their own fence on the west side that have been opened before.
So I think that's important, making sure that fencing and if they're gonna have, you know, animal horses, that the fencing is in good shape. And very clearly marked that this is the property.
So Mr. Winsand had goats that says anything other livestock was there.
Right.
And I think, I think when we approved Mr. Winsand's CUP, it was designed to bring kids out, pick bunkums and various other things in the fall, have kind of a kids attraction.
I guess if there's no other input from the board, I would make motion to approve the CUP on condition that traffic should be directed to go east from the property and not use the private road to the west and that they share in the maintenance of that three hundred and tenth Street with the neighbors. And then also just to note that the CUP is only covering the rental of the house and barn facilities and not, it doesn't include any campers or tiny homes or any of that kind of stuff.
So just to touch base on this. With the road. Guys remember with my CUP, I requested road maintenance agreement. My CUP, I was required a road maintenance agreement, my Mr. Heine just came in here. He was not required with his CUP or road maintenance agreement. So I believe we have to go one way or the other. I believe it's that precedent, so from now on, we either need to do that and there needs to be that requirement in these maintaining of the roads, shared cost, or it's not there. Because we can't, there's no difference between the two. Like Alphonse Road is tons of potholes and I have to maintain that. And I feel for this lady, like I do, but we have to make these same decisions at every meeting and treat everybody fair across the board. That's kind of how I feel about it. I mean, it goes with our subdivision ordinance. This should have three inches of gravel. It should be twenty-four feet wide. And then a year later, another three inches of gravel needs to be applied after the frost comes through. That's in our subdivision ordinance. It just has to be that way. And for instance, like the roads where I'm at, I had to build the north roads at my own cost. And then later on, the people who bought the lots next to it, they just got free roads. It's just how it works, I guess. But I just want to treat everybody fair from now on, pretty much. I don't want to tell one person that they don't have to pay for it and then the next CUP comes in and tell the next person that you have to pay for it. That's just my opinion.
Question, okay, question I have is this, and I'm, so maybe, so I can clarify this for you. So three hundred and tenth Street is a township road?
It's a minimum maintenance.
Okay, minimum maintenance road, so what does that mean?
It's just a county road, it's.
Means just the county didn't take care of it.
Exactly. Well, honestly, the county doesn't want to take on any more roads. It's the same thing with Alphonse, it's the same thing with Buck, it's the same thing with Doe. So it is a, every road basically from here on out is a privately maintained county road. So it's up to the people who live on these roads to pay the cost in gravel. Like I said, it has to be three inches and then a year later, after the frost comes through, you have to do another three inches, has to be six inches, minimum twenty-four feet wide in order to meet our subdivision ordinance requirements.
So that's for new roads, but if it's an existing road, you can't go back and make them catch up with the current ordinance. So we can't go back and tell them, you've got to redo this road and make it this wide. It's a road, it's been there. We can't impose a bunch of conditions on a road that's been there for how many years?
So is there any type of agreement out there then of who takes, because if you look at that, there's quite a few homes. I mean, there's a lot of people that must be using that road.
That's why that road to the right is private. That is all in agreement over there and over here it is not. So it would have to be basically taken over as an agreement and I'm guessing right now, according to her, the only agreement is that whoever's on that road pays for it. And that's it.
So there is an agreement out there that there isn't, just so, so anybody's just, so whoever takes cake. Gotcha, okay. Gotcha, okay.
For me, this is where it's frustrating for me, being out there and not wanting to call it a road. And it wasn't called a road until the tower came in. Until they wanted access to the property. So that's where the frustration for me arises, now that we're calling it a road. And it's not a maintenance road because we're making money off the tower out there. But we're still at cost because I reported they were supposed to fix it when the culverts got crushed after the tower was built. So culverts, I sent it in, saying they had to cut a crush culvert. County had to create the tower that they were getting come off. It's at the expense of the tower people and it's never happened.
Okay, so at that meeting, there was a requirement for a certain amount of gravel to be put down on the road at the commission level. It was either one or two inches, whatever it was that was agreed upon. Do you remember from what, from what point in this map, from what point to what point that was at?
I think it was just past us where the tower drive was to 434.
So then there's a gap from there to the private development to the east.
But I mean, there's gravel there because they put some down.
I think that'd be.
Sounds like zoning enforcement.
I think that was part of the zoning or conditional use permit is that the tower people were gonna maintain the roads. That may be, that they were gonna maintain it during construction. So maybe that's something to know and bring up with Highway Department or you guys. But getting back to this CUP, I guess my motion still stands. And I guess then intent of the sharing the cost of road maintenance is to make it passable, work with the neighbors to what's reasonable on that road, make it work with everybody. So it's not just the person at the end of the road taking care of all of it.
I believe at the last commission meeting, we tabled, said we're gonna do some further investigation. We didn't table, we said we'd do some further investigation.
We tabled it, the motion was to table it.
Okay.
For the.
310.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was talking, yeah, I'm sorry, I was talking about a different one.
We're gonna get an opinion from Mike on whether he.
Can fix it up?
Can fix it up. Find out what Mike's position on that road is.
From what I learned in the last meeting with that, when that tower came in, the commission wanted no part in any maintenance. Dan had to basically make several motions, like can we get one inch? Can we get two inches? It just started at like three and then it just started getting down. I think the agreement was one inch and I think they left it up to the commission, if I remember right.
The other option is make your decision, approve it on the condition Mike can get a report before the county commission. I would think within, I mean, we're gonna talk in three weeks. He should be able to go out there and hopefully get some ideas.
He will. He knows the road.
Yeah, that way we can keep things going on track and.
So entertain amendments.
I'll second the motion.
Do you want to make amendment?
No.
But I will contact Mike and have him go out and give us some kind of suggestion or idea.
All right.
Cole, do you have an issue with road maintenance on that, all sharing the costs?
I don't fully understand, like, I don't have an issue with that.
Cole, Cole, would you come up to the microphone because people at home can't hear?
I have no issue with cost sharing. I wonder how that works as far as if I'm the only one with it written in on the entire street. Like I have absolutely no issue with helping to pay the cost of the road because certainly they should not be responsible to take care of that on their own and do it on. No, so, and I, and I understand that. And that's what I'm getting to is if I'm listed as the only person on the entire stretch of road that has that.
Requirement.
Requirement.
So that's what.
That's what I am questioning.
So that's what Joe Healy said the last time when Ryan Heine came up. He said with the road agreement, that's, it's very vague. So for instance, if these guys don't want the CUP at all, I'm not saying that you don't, but if they don't want it at all and they don't sign a road agreement to get this on with this condition, then his CUP doesn't exist because he doesn't meet the condition. That's how Joe, that's how Joe Healy described it the last time with Ryan Heine's. That's why Joe said not to do the conditions for the road maintenance agreement for Ryan Heine at the commission level. Then he would be out of CUP because they just won't sign a road agreement. And there again, there's two people in the room and like, I trust that Cole would just share the cost without even a condition. I would hope he would, but there again, like there's so many more people on that road, even off of that road that use that road. And it's just like, they should all be in it, but Cole's the one applying for this CUP that's getting that requirement and I don't believe that's fair.
Yeah, if there's no more input from the board, I have a motion in a second.
So you still won't amend your motion?
If you'd like to propose an amendment to it.
I would please, please propose an amendment. I think we have to keep everything fair here.
So what's your suggestion?
I think we stick with everything you said, other than the maintenance agreement. I mean, it's a public right of way. It'd be different if it was private. But I believe since it's a public right of way, that I would just hope in good faith that Cole does that. And we just take that out of your motion.
Your motion didn't have a road agreement. It just said they would cooperate.
Share the cost.
Yeah, you didn't ask for any specific.
Road agreement, I just said share the cost recently.
So technically he could put in a penny into that road and that would be sharing the costs, correct? Okay. I just, I just want to clarify everything and make sure we got all the stuff we're missing. So if you, if you want to keep it that way and then it's up to them, I mean, that, that sounds fair to me. If, if they, I hope in good faith that they do share it and I hope that the people up the road do also. If you want to keep it that way, I would vote for that because then it's up to him how much he wants to contribute so he wouldn't have to lose his CUP because there wasn't a road agreement. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, ready to vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Nelson.
No.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
All right. Motion yes. All right, next agenda item is East River Electric Rezone. Applicant is requesting to rezone two parcels from rural transitional and low density residential to moderate density residential for Article 18, Section 1809 and Article 20, Section 2003. Said property is legally described as lots one and two of Lewis and Clark Substation. Addition to the addition in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 15. In the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 22 Township 93, north range 56 west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota, containing three acres more or less near to the south township. All right, anybody from, go ahead.
Before, before they come up, Don, at the last meeting, had asked us to meet with some of the people that are concerned that live out there. So we met with Wade Lippert, the head of HOA, made a list of all the concerns and we went through them with them. And the two biggest ones that he seemed to think were the most important were screening and making sure the drainage wasn't going to overload the ditch. So we passed those on to East River Electric. And they had their engineers look at the property and how it was gonna drain, make sure it wasn't gonna have an effect. And I think they've added screening to their process, to their proposal. The other thing I would mention too is, and we got kind of wrapped up in it last time, but remember this is about the rezone and not the substation because it's a permitted use. So they could, in theory, put it anywhere out there. So this is about whether the rezone is warranted.
All right, anybody from East River should speak?
Good evening, I'm Steve Arbuck of East River. I'm the special projects manager. I have with me tonight, Dre Wire from East River. And Sarda from Bun Home, Yankton Electric. And Stephanie Horse from Bun Home, Yankton Electric. So we would, I'd like to start by restating the needs for the substation and also address some of the concerns that have been brought up and that Bill's already addressed here. And I'd also like to thank Bill and the commission for allowing us the opportunity to speak to you again tonight. So the original East River Transmission Line and the Gavin's Point Substation were installed in 1970 to serve by a two and a half mile long radial transmission line with access issues. So what that means is anytime that we have an issue with that line, that substation is at risk or, you know, the, the substation might be off because of a maintenance issue on the line. So all the time that it takes to find that issue and to get access to the line and make repairs, that, that substation is offline. All the customers that are associated with it are offline. And that existing system is reaching its load serving capabilities. So to address the load growth and reliability needs of our member, BY, East River has evaluated several options based on cost, reliability, impacts and feasibility. The site that we have selected, first of all, expanding the existing Gavin's Point Substation is, isn't really a good option because of the adjacent property development and the surrounding terrain. We have some ability to, to increase capacity at the station, but it's, it's not a, a good solution due to the fact that we have that long radial or the radial feed to the station. Okay, so we proposed the new Lewis and Clark Substation and associated transmission line. And it's, it'll be located near the high load growth area and allows, allows BY Electric to install more distribution circuits to more efficiently serve the areas load growth and increasing reliability needs. That station, the location that we picked is ideal for BY. It's the location that they have indicated that they would like to see the station at. It ties directly into circuits that feed all four directions from that station. And that station will provide a redundant power source, provide capacity for future load growth and provide stronger ties for load transfers during system outages. Currently there are 1907 meters that would be impacted by a system outage. And approximately 4, 4,634 people at residences, 1,500 campsites, and a total of 8,300 people that could be impacted by an outage of that Gavin's Point Substation. All right. So we're seeking a rezoning of the property to accommodate smalling of a small or the plating of a smaller lot and allow for utilization of the substation on this property. Here's the, the site layout. You can see that we have the lot one, which is where the station is going to be built, proposed to be built, screening on the north, the east. We've added some additional screening, lower screening on the west because we want it to remain lower so that it enables us to bring our transmission line in from the north without basically growing up into that transmission line, creating issues for us as, as the trees get taller. Also note that on lot two, which is to the south, we've added some additional screening, that'll be some taller screening. So that provides another buffer to the houses to the south. And that shaded area that you see are trees that are existing, they will remain. Also, the trees, we've talked to the existing property owner and he's agreed to leave, that we can leave the trees to the east as well. So all those trees will stay, we'll add screening to the north, to the east and some lower screening on the west and some additional screening on lot two. So there was some concern about lot two, so let me address lot two. It's included as part of the original purchase agreement for a minimum amount of land. We'll add some screening with tower growing trees along the north lot line. It will serve as a buffer to the adjacent property. It will not be utilized for substation expansion. We have no plans to utilize a property. There'd be a possibility of maybe some short-term use while we build the substation, but other than that, we plan to continue to allow the present owner to utilize it for agriculture or possibly some green type planning that we could put in place. The fencing and the trees along the west property line will remain. And let's take, I'd like to show you some views. So this is, the first one to the left is lot one, looking south along Deer Boulevard. You can see the trees that we're talking about that are gonna remain. Another view, a little bit closer up to the right from Deer Boulevard. Okay, so now lot two, looking east from Orchid. You can see the fence and the trees that are existing on lot two. Like I said, they'll remain. And also you can, to the left, you can see the trees that will remain as well. Now another view from lot two, along the lot two fence line, along the west property line of lot two. And another view, a little bit closer up, more from lot one. Lot two, looking south from the north property, again, on the left. You can see the fence, the screening, that's some screening, some trees that are already in place along lot two and some trees that are in place up against the adjacent property to the south. And I just wanted to show you an example of an existing substation with screening. This one is one that's been in place a while over by Brandon. You can see the station from directly across the street, but on the right, it's behind the trees. One of the things that was brought up earlier was some concerns about EMF levels. I had stated at the time that you're exposed in a lot of cases to more magnetic fields right in your house or in your workplace than you are from, from a power line. So on the left, you can see some typical levels at six inches, like for a dishwasher or more commonly a hair dryer, a computer. Versus on the right, if you look at 115 KV line, we're shown at 200 feet, point zero one gauss. Whereas a hair dryer at six inches is 300 gauss, milli gauss. So that gives you kind of an idea what the impact of the EMF would be at the site. And one of the other concerns was runoff from the site. So we took it to our contractor or consultant, in this case, BGR, DeWilde Grant Ricker. They're the ones that are also doing the grading plan. And so they did their hydrology reports for the site. They ran two 10, 100-year events. 100-year event is a precept of roughly six inches of rain over 24-hour period. And the results are the existing versus the proposed, we actually have less runoff. And that is because we're putting a grass area around the substation, which serves as a buffer. So we bring in black dirt, plant grass around the sub. Okay? So that's basically my presentation. And I would respectfully ask that the commission approve our request. So that's basically my presentation and I would respectfully ask that the commission approve our request to rezone this property.
All right, is there any questions from the boardroom?
Um, that uh, one fifteen KB, that's the, that is the power, the size of the power of the line coming in, is that correct?
Yes, we're proposing a one fifteen KV line.
All right, thank you. All right, I will open it to public comment on this rezone application and try and keep us on track a little bit. I mean, I'm limited to three minutes each. If you'd like to come up and start with whoever wants to come up, state your name for the record.
My name is Greg Henderson. I live at three seven oh eight Christie Lane. So I'm one of the property owners that are abutting the proposed project. I appreciate the modifications to the plan. If we're going to be having to have the substation located there, I think what they're proposing will be beneficial. It'll help. But I would still like to have, you said that you have no intention of using lot two at all. If that could be put in some kind of deed or some official document, other than I appreciate you expressed it publicly. But we'd like to have some other reassurance that that in fact would remain that way. Because again, your intentions today may change over time. And honestly, that is what I'm most concerned about because it physically touches our property. And that runoff from that lot, if it was hard surfaced, will go down into our property. That's a pretty steep slope if you've been out there. So again, the homeowners are disappointed in the sense that we just assumed have this someplace else. I can't speak for the group. I'm speaking for myself. But if it has to be there, I think they're, they're heading in the right direction in terms of trying to make it less of a problem. And hopefully you'll become good neighbors and we'll get along. But again, I, I would like to have had a conversation on this a long time ago. But it is what it is. So if the county can oppose conditions, I would appreciate it if you would voluntarily do something that would put this in the record.
Thank you. All right, thanks.
I, Amy New of Lewis and Clark West, request applicants' request for rezoning be denied. There are better locations for this substation that are not in the backyards of taxpayers' residence. Bring on the substation for the progress of our community. I invite anyone in this room who would like to live next to something like this to please stand. Who wants that in their backyard? I don't. I sure did.
Yeah, everyone close to us on point, I know what they look like.
I don't see anybody standing. We don't want this in our backyard either. Your state from your surveying is in our tree in our backyard. Please find a better location where you're not in residents' backyards. There is room at the north end of the field that you're considering now. There is also room on the east end of that field next to a grove of trees. This is an opportunity to do the right thing.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
So my wife explained, that's my wife, and she explained that there was a, a V just straight to the, of John New. So right, right straight along, I'm sorry. Okay. So there is a, going right along that, if you go straight east, it's right along the transmission line. We had talked to Heineys and they said they could put that anywhere in their field as long as it was not interrupting their pivots. In the corner, straight east of that line is a spot that's right next to the transmission line that would go right on there. That they could use that piece according to Heineys. Then people that live there could actually choose whether they live with a substation in their backyard. I noticed from my wife what you said, none of you people live where, I don't care, Bill. I don't, I don't really care, Bill. I'm pissed off because I do not want a goddamn substation in my backyard.
Your three minutes is almost up.
Okay.
So you want it.
Sure.
Yeah.
I, I'm very upset. I spent most of my life savings, a lot of it is in my house. And now I'm going to have, there, and I, it's, I like that you're putting some screening in there. But it's a shelter belt that has deciduous trees that are going to fall. And I'm looking straight at a damn substation through my back window every morning. I got a beautiful place to live and now I gotta have a damn substation there. I don't really care that it's a permitted use. You can stop it from, they have to make them buy a bunch more ground and I can promote Heineys to make it cost a lot damn more. So you don't have that ground. I don't want it in my backyard.
All right, thanks, John. Anybody else wish to speak?
My name is Nick Whitehead and I appreciate the opportunity for the second hearing and I respect last, last month, it was, you guys really showed a lot of intuitive to come up and talk about planning. I really appreciate that. And, and all you guys have probably looked at this a little bit different since the second hearing. It was interesting that the, the folks here said the re, one of the reasons why they didn't want in their PowerPoint is because the environment in the other substation, there's, how did, how was it put? I, I couldn't see it very well. But there was already the expanding residential or something area. Is that correct? I'm not sure if I said that right.
I'd like, like to clarify, the terrain on that site is, is really unlevel and it's not really conducive to adding onto the station.
Right, right. But one of the words that you had said is that there was, it's in a residential area of some, and I don't think I have a right, sir. I apologize. Yeah, it's being developed. Ours is already developed, which is, and the plan for Heineys years ago, my concern is that roads, okay? We have a road directly west of those trees, which has been developed just recently. Uh, and now that road, those trees are right on the section line. So we have to respect our forefathers about section lines. That's a, that, that, if we could pull up that, that gray area, you can see on their, on their pictures where those trees have to be removed to put into the section line.
They're in the section.
They are in the section, yes.
The current trees are in the section. It's the one they're proposing or not.
Correct. But that's why John and that's why our group is very adamant that number one, you have a property that is going to be split by a section line with ditches. And that's a concern that you, as a planning and zoning people, you need to look forward and to see that. There is better spots for this and I respectfully hope that you deny this because there's a section over in an area that's already marked commercial. Instead of doing a variance, last time I said you guys do a lot of variances. I think rezoning areas is kind of like doing a variance in a sense. Let's just rezone it and make it what we need it to be. But it is rural and it should be twenty acres. That's what the rule is. Maybe it should be five acres. They're still only buying three.
You're starting to go over your time, so.
Okay, thank you. I re, I really appreciate your time and I hope we can resolve this issue.
All right, thanks. Anybody else wish to speak?
My name's Tim Kellen and I live directly behind it. So I have a couple of questions. The main one is, and I do appreciate the, the screening, how tall will those trees be when they're spaded in or planted? And the other question I have is, what is the square footage of the substation itself? And then every time I see a substation, I see a lot of chain link fencing. Where will that fencing be? Because that tree line is, you know, most of the time when I see a substation, you guys fence your entire property. Which is, you're right. But in this case, if you fenced the entire property around lot two, you're going to disrupt all the deer that walk down that tree line. So I'm, I'm concerned about that. I think, you know, like Greg said, if it's, if it's something that has to happen, has to happen. But at the same time, there's still some concerns that I have as far as just what it does to the environment for the deer. So will those trees on the south side of your property be five footers, ten footers, fifteen footers, twenty footers? Because the tree lines that's there, those trees lose all their leaves in the winter. So all winter long, you know, the way our homes are structured is we look out the back of our homes. The front is more of like the back, really. So all winter long, we're going to sit there and stare at a substation, which no offense, but they're not that aesthetically pleasing, if you will. So just had those questions.
All right, thanks. You guys want to address a couple of those things?
Sure, the, the fenced area of the substation is roughly one hundred by hundred sixty feet. Uh, and adjacent to the fence, the area that we fence in, there will be green grass and that's the area that we propose to put some of the screening on the north, on the east, on the west.
To be on the inside of your screening.
So the fence will be inside of the screening, yes. With green on adjacent to the fencing. And those trees in that statutory right away will remain in place. The trees that we would propose to put in addition on lot two, we would spade in some evergreens and and I can't say for, for sure, but roughly five, six foot evergreen trees is what we would propose. So that they are a buffer. They would provide additional screening for the deciduous trees that are still in place to the north of that.
Okay, thanks. All right, this is.
So with that south screening or the north screening on lot two, could there be, so your fence is on the other side of the gray. Could there be another row? Because I see you got two rows of trees all around where nobody sees it, but yet on our side, we only have one row. Could we get, because you're gonna, eventually that could be a row, so we want to keep that open. So could we put a row, another additional row of trees on the south end of lot number one? Because that's, that's really the issue, if you're gonna, if, if you have to be there, which I don't think you need to be. That, that was my question. Because those trees are going to be gone. They're, they're junk trees. That's, that's, that's a row. That's a section line, actually.
Okay, Nick, thanks. Well, we'll go on to see if there's anybody else that wants public comment. All right, anybody else? I thought I saw a couple more back there.
Yeah, Andy Brian thirty-seven eleven Christie. I guess the biggest concern is that we're putting this where people have been living for twenty plus years. It would seem to make a lot more sense to put it where people would have the choice to move and know that that's going to be in their, their area. Seems like we're paying the price for all the other people that have moved in recently. All the campers, all the new houses. So it seems like we're being penalized when we shouldn't be. So that's my thought.
All right, thanks. Anybody else wish to speak on this? Everyone's.
Lily New, I do not want a substation in my backyard.
All right, is there any others? Come on up.
I'm Judy New and I'm a thirty-seven oh six Stacy Lane. And my husband helped develop this area. And we saw it as some, just a beautiful place to live. And now we're going to get this. We really, we love Yankton and we, we want to keep it beautiful. And we don't want anything to change it. We, we love living here and we love everything about Yankton and this is so heartbreaking.
All right, anybody else in the audience? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. For discussion, unless Bill, you got something to add?
No, I, I just, the section land road is brought up about developing, if that's ever developed, it has to go by the subdivision, subdivision ordinance, proper ditches and that. So that will be taken care of.
All right, for discussion.
It, it appears to me that we're it appears to me that we're in a kind of a difficult position. Certainly people that live close to a facility like this would prefer not to be there. Granted, that's true. But when you weigh that against not being able to serve hundreds or thousands of people with electricity, seems to me like one of the issues that we always deal with when we look at growth in the community. So I think that balance is where I'd have to land.
I think that they've addressed our major concerns from previous meeting with the screening and drainage. I mean, leaving the existing grove, which was a concern at the last meeting, was that being taken down partially or that's resolved and then additional screening has been added. The drainage study they put on there shows it looks like it should be better for the drainage in the area under their proposal with the green space and the grading that would be done. So I guess I know that, I guess I agree with Don, where, and we got to kind of balance where it goes. Nobody wants it close to them, but then also you got to realize that it has to be where the electrical needs are, which is in this area, which has seen a lot of growth in recent years.
So from the last meeting, this is, I know it's the ideal location as far as the intersection of, is it two or three lines, four lines? It is possible to move it, but that would add significant costs, correct? So that's, that's kind of where I come from. I my decisions. my decisions that I try to make are in the best interest of the public. I was trying to find it. I thought it said something like that in our comprehensive plan, maybe. I don't remember what it was, but I can't argue with what these people are saying. I would not want this in my backyard and there's nobody else here. I guess, like, I don't know. And sometimes we get stuck because of our ordinance, like, we have to make decisions. Do we have to make this decision to rezone? Are we obligated by law? You know what I'm saying? Like, some parts we get stuck in that. But I don't know if this is one of those decisions. Like, do we have to rezone it? Like, I get that it's a significant extra cost to the company, but to put it in these other places, I feel like this is a commercial use. I feel like this should be in commercial, and I know our ordinance doesn't say that, and I hope to God that we, we change that to make it so it's in an area where it's not in somebody's backyard. It, it's tough without the state's attorney here or whatever to tell us if we can. And I get it, like, just so you guys know, this is a recommendation. This isn't a full decision. So that'll be by the county. But I feel like I'm here for a reason. I don't waste my time every, you know, every month on a Tuesday night just to pass everything on to the commission. I feel like my, my recommendation, I hope, matters. Hearing, like, my heart breaks hearing, you know, all this stuff from you guys. I mean, I have three businesses down there on Deer Boulevard. I know how you feel. It's a beautiful place down there, but I just I, basically, the bottom line is, I don't know if we're actually stuck in this decision or not. That, that's it.
I'd like to address that. So they talk about moving it to another place in that area. Any place they move it is going to have to be rezoned because they're only going to buy one or two acres. So anywhere in that area is going to have to be rezoned. So if it's okay to rezone it on the east end of the property, then the rezone is warranted on the west end of the property. The only way they don't have to rezone is if they buy four more acres on the south lot, lot two, and just build it. So, you know, you kind of take all that into account. Anything down there is going to have to be rezoned for a smaller, smaller lot.
I, I see what Bill's talking about as far as the rezone. Another thing, there again, I don't remember if it's in our comprehensive planner in the ordinance, but fitting in with the area. It's one of the checkmarks, I believe, on whether it's CUPs or whatever. This, this most definitely, in my opinion, doesn't fit with this area at all. I believe it fits with commercial. I guess there again, that's just my opinion.
I guess just to address that, Matt, I, I think that having public utilities in a residential area does fit, and that's why it's a permitted use in every zoning district. It's because you need utilities unless you're going to go without. So as far as fitting into the area, I mean.
Four companies, substations are in like city limits. Seven of them? That's how I feel. And there again, Chris, I, I'm not arguing. I'm just saying that it's just my opinion, I guess. And there again, like, that's one of those things. If we want it changed, the ordinance has to be voted on and changed. That's the only way we can do it. Like, that would change this entire meeting if our ordinance said different, but I'm just going in the best interest of the public, I guess, to me. That's how I feel.
The best interest of most of the public is they have electricity.
I agree, Don, but like, they could go in the same section. I, I understand it costs them more money, but they could go in the same section and buy land from the Hines in the rural transitional, get it rezoned, and it would be away from the houses, right?
I don't know that.
If Hines would sell, you mean?
But I think we're getting off track again. This isn't about whether or not it belongs or it's a permitted use. It's whether the rezone is warranted according to the ordinance. So you can feel that it should go somewhere else. You can't make your decision on that. What does the ordinance say as far as rezones?
I'm just going through the ordinance. It's a permitted use in residential, correct?
In almost every district.
In rural transitional, it's permitted?
Yep. But you have to have twenty acres.
Exactly. So it's not permitted on that one acre of RT, correct?
But if you moved it east, you'd have to get a
Yes or no? Is it permitted? In one acre of RT?
If it's rezoned, it'd be rezoned to something different.
But it's not in one acre of RT.
Right. RT is minimum twenty acres.
Exactly.
That's why we're trying to rezone it.
That's what these people are trying to tell you.
They can't afford to buy twenty acres. Hines won't sell them twenty acres.
Perfect, yeah, whatever they said.
There you go.
Again, I think we have to go by the ordinance. What the ordinance says is the rezone warranted according to the ordinance.
Make a motion to
approve the request.
Great, I have a motion to approve the request to rezone.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second.
So can you just give me one second here? So in findings of fact here, is that where it says it fits the area? Is that correct?
It's a permitted use.
Is, does it say, so it doesn't say fits near and findings of fact?
Permitted use means it fits the area.
So in the question, so, does it say that?
You have to decide that.
That's what I'm saying. I'll just find it. Hold on a second. Give me a second.
May I ask a question while we're waiting?
Yep, go ahead.
After the la, after the last meeting, I was, we were talking. If this does not, if you have to go out and do something different, what, how far down timeline are you looking at? To get something down there to provide electricity for those people? Because it's my understanding that they're already on a short leash as far as electricity is, is, goes.
Do you want to address that a little bit?
And I don't see development stopping anytime soon.
I should add too, that we've had cannabis applications, soil works were sold. They're going to have a huge grow there. And my understanding is that's going to be a huge draw on the current electrical system.
Okay.
We really would like to have this substation in service before summer load next year, and we're pretty much up against that timeline right now. We still propose if this is approved, goes through the commission, gets approved to grade the site yet this fall. Substation construction itself typically takes about five months to six months after grading.
Ken, Ken started with Bottom Yankton Electric. I'm the operations manager there, I guess. Load wise, the Gavin substation as it sits right now is a seven point four KW. I'm just going to rattle off some numbers, just so you can understand where that all comes from and sizing wise and what we have for capabilities. It is a seven point four KW MVA substation, I'm sorry. And as of July of last year, we were pushing seven point nine. This July, we were at seven point four. We can, for emergency purposes, bump that just a little bit. Just throwing this, as Bill alluded to, the cannabis, if that goes when and if that system jumps up there, that's two megs by itself. So we're by two megs over the top of what the Gavin sub can handle right now. We have a campground just to the north of this of eighty eight sites that didn't have a camper on it. I don't believe all summer. That's, we're looking at a third of a meg goes into something of that nature. The Gavin substation itself cannot handle the load that's going to be in this area without any huge other development. This substation placement, as we told you, is, it is a dividing area of four different circuits. It, it just makes sense that that's a good spot for it. The Gavin substation, maybe you don't understand what radial feed is, and maybe you haven't looked at it, but the radial feed means there's one line that feeds that Gavin's Point substation. And if you've looked at the line, it goes cross country through the back lots up in Marina Dells. As that happens, poles rot, poles have problems, windstorms come through, knock one of those over. If that happens on July fourth, July fifth, on a busy, busy, busy weekend, we, we won't be able to pick up that load. There will definitely be people out of power down at that lake area. I guess that's the point of it all. That's why we need it.
Have you guys done any cost analysis whatsoever?
To do what?
If, say, for instance, like, I'm just trying to figure this out, Ken. If, for instance, you did move to, I don't remember specifically the exact areas he was talking about. I know one that they talked about was behind La Croix's. I know that wasn't very feasible for you guys at all. Basically, some way to I don't know if it's even moving it a hundred feet or whatever it is to make everybody happy. Like, it's, I just don't know if you've ever done a cost analysis to, for another
We know exactly what the cost to put in a mile of line is. And by this, if we're looking to go a quarter mile north, that means we have to splice on and add on to three of those circuits for a quarter mile. We're talking close to a mile line, not quite. So it's going to be on, in that hundred thousand dollar mark, just on BY's side. These guys at East River have spent a ton of money on the engineering and the design of this and the design of the line already. So to change that, I don't know what
Costs.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thanks. All right, so Matt, unless you have anything else to add?
I checked it over. I'm, I'm good now.
All right, so I had a motion in a second to approve the rezone application. Any final thoughts from the board? All right, we can do a roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
No.
Kettering.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
All right, thanks, everybody, for your input. Next agenda item is the E nine one one ordinance eleven amendment discussion. And I'm assuming you have something to present for that.
So Paul brought this up. We didn't even know it existed. It's from nineteen seventy something, so when they get to it. And we looked at it. He thought it needed some changes, so he made a few changes. Then I looked at it and I added some things, and Gary looked at it. He modified a couple of things. If you look at the original one, it's, it's outdated. There's, if I can find it. So here's the original one. It talks about, I think, equal, registered deeds taking care of changes and things like that, equalization. None of that's pertinent anymore. So we modified it to I don't realize it was this long. There we go. We made some changes. Added the current concurrents of the nine one committee with new road intersections, and we've gone through that before. Road names, we added this because it didn't address those before. So anybody that wants to look at this knows what kind of name they have to use. And we've had that issue where we've got a lot of names that are similar. So we do get a new proposed road name. We get it to District Three, we get it to Paul. I think Fire Marshal, they all taught, does it fit? Is it too similar? They come up with the name and then we prove it. Obviously, now District Three does all our signing. So that's one of the big changes. We added a few changes here, talking about where the numbers are going to be, so they're distinguishable. We added a campground section, so that Matt's been a part of this, where we try to get a, a number for every pad. So the campground has an address, but if he, if EMS is called to Matt's campground, you know, we all started, it was the campground. They didn't know where to go. Now we've got numbers for every pad. So they can say we're at pad this, and they know exactly where to go. And then one of the other things we noticed, you know, they'll apply for an E nine on one permit or an E nine on one address. It'll be assigned to them. The sign is ready and they won't pick up the sign. And so Paul, Paul brought this up. There is possibility of a fine and jail time if you don't follow through. So we've changed our permitting system. So when they get their notice that the sign's ready, it tells them they have X amount of days to get the sign and get it up. But it also addresses if the sign disappears, they've got to replace it. Because I think we were talking, one, one development out there, I think half the signs are gone. One of those older roads out there on Deer Boulevard, it's like half of them are gone. And so we got to figure out how we're going to get them reassigned or get signs put up again. So if EMS has a problem, they know where to go. But basically, it was to update everything, make everything match what's actually going on in the county now, and make this clear. So we're not going off of something made in the seventies.
I appreciate the names. Those could be made different, very different, because there is some confusion out there. With some of those names out there are very similar, similar.
We, we run into that, you know, there's, there's a Karen Drive, a Karen Road, there's, you know, Something Road has the same drive. So the people that are looking at it now, they'll look at all the street names, and if it is even close, they're going to make you find something unique and different, so that when they get a call, they don't make a mistake and go to the wrong place.
So this is only applying to new roads.
Yes.
They're developed.
Yep. You know, there's, I think there's Lakeview Drive, Lakeview Terrace. There's another Lakeview something. And you, you know, you get the wrong suffix and that, that can be a way different location than where you want them to go. So they're pretty, pretty detailed on giving names out now. It has to be quite different. And if you have any suggestions or additions, we went through it several times to try to make sure everything was clear.
So my big thing is the five hundred dollar fine and thirty days in jail. That's pretty. Yeah, right. If you forgot to put up your sign, you'd love to do thirty days in jail.
They can't get to the right place. I'm sorry. Life is worth more than five hundred dollars.
Well, so here's the problem with the new construction. So we require them to have an E nine on one address before they start, before we'll issue a building permit. And that's when a lot of the concern is, because you got construction guys out there, big equipment, somebody gets hurt. We're out here somewhere, you know, find us.
That's how they do it in the city. So that even goes with roads. I think that's a genius idea. Like, if the sign is required before they can start any CUP or any building permit whatsoever. Well, that, like, it would have it there right away, like
And then that's the tough part about the starting construction, because the way people do it in this town is they wait until the day before they want to start building to apply for the permit. And it takes us a week or two to get the sign. But if they don't have the sign up, because we know when they pick the sign up, emergency management
Sends it over.
Well, they go pick it up and then emergency management finishes the permit. We all get notified that that permits, that E nine on one permit is done. If they don't have it up within twenty days, if somebody reports them, they can get a fine.
So like, it's, I know I'm getting off subject a little bit here, but it's like, it's the same thing with roads in city limits, like Kirby Hofer can't even get a building permit until the road is completely finished on it. Like, I think
I don't think our developers would do that in the country.
But like, if, for instance, say, they did want to start building and they didn't have the sign, sorry, it's your own fault for not applying. Like, I just think thirty days in jail for not putting something up.
And I think that's an extreme, but I think the fine is what they're letting them know that, hey, if you don't get this sign put up, you can get a fine, and most people don't want to pay a fine, so.
I think the five hundred thirty days thing is pretty much the same through our whole ordinance, isn't it? I think the five hundred thirty days thing is pretty much the same throughout our whole ordinance, isn't it?
Yeah, the rest of you-
Yeah, I've seen most of the class two misdemeanor.
Yeah, you can get, I mean, again, I think it'd be pretty egregious.
We don't wanna pay for the thirty days in jail either. It's costing a lot of money. Just put and after and put five hundred dollars and or thirty days in jail.
Okay, and or, okay.
And or, so we don't have to, you can just give them a fine instead of throwing them in jail? Because right now you gotta and-
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, so you're saying, we're saying it's both and or, so it's one or the other.
It's really egregious, maybe you can do something.
Yeah, but, gotcha, yeah.
We don't have to automatically resort to that.
A question, so every camper spot is gonna have a nine one one?
No, no, they have a bad number.
Oh, okay.
So all the campground man owners had to go through and assign each, kinda like the campground. You know, you go to Gavin's Point, but there's pad, one, two, three, four. They all have their own pad numbers, however they wanted to do it.
Gotcha.
And we've got maps, EMS has maps.
So it's kinda like having an apartment address that says this so and so on, the street number, whatever.
Well, we had an incident, I don't know if it was-
There's been two. There's been two at my place.
Yeah, Peterson said one, two, one or two, but that was before we had this. And so they made it to the campground, didn't know where in the campground to go, and so it took them a little bit of time. This'll clear everything up.
For, for safety matters, they shouldn't be forgetting to put the damn sign up.
Correct. Is that the only other, the only change you would like to see is the and or, so we don't throw people in jail?
Sorry, we missed that.
I, I would, I would even suggest that we maybe says, uh, fine, and or five hundred, up to five hundred dollars and thirty days in jail.
That's actually what class two misdemeanor exactly states.
Up to five hundred?
I can actually look up the class two if you want me to, quick here. I'm pretty sure that's exactly what it states.
Well, up to five hundred makes more sense, too, just, okay. There's not anything else? We'll need a motion to send this on, a recommendation to send this on to the county commission.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Right, motion and second. Any further input?
No, give me one second here. It's class two misdemeanors, no less potential, up to thirty days imprisonment, and it does, it doesn't say all. So it includes it all together. So it says up to thirty days imprisonment and five hundred dollar fines, instead of saying and or after that.
Same thing, really?
Yep, perfect.
Depends on who your English teacher was.
Yeah.
But yeah, we'll change it to up to five hundred dollar fine and or thirty days in jail.
Okay.
Roll call vote?
Go ahead when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
And then the next part was definitions in Article fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen. There weren't many changes, kind of small. Alright, this was, has to do with an application that came through a while back for kind of those man caves along fifty-two, you know, little storage buildings. They looked like a storage building, but they were gonna be sold, and they would have a common wall. So to address that, we had a common wall definition to the ordinance, to definitions. Take care of that. And then I think we have a shared wall definition, too.
I think you just rolled by one bill, I could do. Sorry.
No, the screen just looks like that a little bit. It's on page thirty. Thirty.
Basically kind of the same thing, twin homes or any of those things, shared wall structures. I don't know if there were any more definitions.
Yeah, and the zero lot line, zero lot line structure.
Yeah. So if we're building a twin home, that zero lot line is where the two built, two halves meet. There's no, no setback. The buildings are connected with a common shared wall, so we have a zero lot line.
So, does this, does it show, is it, is this like permitted use and, like, did they add it to permitted, to permitted uses or?
Well, no, well, some aren't, some aren't. So we're talking like twin family homes, multifamily homes. I don't know if they're permitted in any, but they're CUPs. But the problem is, a couple of commissioners without these definitions believe they all needed a variance. And so if we pass these and acknowledge a zero light line and a common wall, they can build a twin home as long as the main structure meets setbacks, they won't need a variance for that zero lot line in between them. So we've got change in time here, political campaign signs, change it from three to seven days after the election, they need to be removed.
That's just the same as the state, right?
I believe so, yeah. See, they have a different number, but-
There's no setup time, though, in the county, right?
Oh, really?
Like, out early, that's what I thought.
But I think they're talking about, next change maybe looking at just so it matches the state.
I think city is what, seventy-five?
Yeah.
Seventy-five, I'm pretty sure.
The only regulations we have are, you know, size that you're allowed to put on the ground.
Block on the right of way.
And it has to be out of the right of way. You know, shared wall structure, definition of what it is. So if we, if you want to build twin homes or things like that, they don't have to get a variance.
You save those guys quite a bit, you save those guys quite a bit of money. As far as, how, how many vary, we said like eighty variances or something like that, they would have had to get.
And then we took this out, just because this has to do with the hundred and twenty foot structure. So there was some confusion. So if we don't permit it, we don't regulate it. So if they, they don't need a permit for a hundred and twenty square foot or smaller building, then we don't, they don't submit a building permit, we don't check the setbacks. And there were some people that just confused them. So we eliminated this sentence to clear it up. If it's a hundred and twenty square foot or smaller, we don't permit for it, we don't regulate.
So, is this, I know, I talked, I think I talked, when I talked, I don't remember if it was you or Gary, we're talking about, it, there's a difference between like a hundred and twenty square foot building and a hundred and twenty square foot, like, deck, pretty much.
This does not cover the deck. This is, this is a structure.
That's just structured.
Just a building.
So like, for instance, like, if it's under a hundred and twenty, did we, I don't remember if we decided they needed a permit for a deck?
See, the, a deck, you know, in theory, a deck's gonna be attached to the house.
Okay.
So it's, it's adding on to a structure, you're making that structure bigger.
So like a camper, for instance, like, that's where it kinda, I think what Gary told me is, no matter how small the deck is, if it's under a hundred and twenty, they need a building permit. If it's one foot by one foot, they need a permit.
This is, you know, it's, 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 it's
This is just-
Four, four sheds, buildings, you know, like that.
Okay.
Not pergola or, you know.
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah.
I think that's it.
Okay.
I guess I don't see any problem with any of those changes. The only thing I'm a little unclear about is section fifteen twenty-seven, they're adding the shared wall structures, does a shared wall structure then need to be added into either the conditional use permit section on each of the zoning districts, or does-
Nope, a shared wall structure is like a twin home, so we have-
We have multifamily.
We have multifamily, two-family homes. And that's why we put this in to address that. So they didn't have to get a variance if they wanted to build that, on that zero lot line. So when they, when they get the CUP for the twin, twin home, they're covered under the definitions.
But if you build a single family, right on the lot line?
Can't do that. Single family would still need to meet setbacks. This isn't, this isn't the-
So you can't change your mind down the road.
Yeah, this isn't the property lot line. So if you had a one acre lot and you wanted to build a twin home on it, get a CUP, the structure itself has to meet all the setbacks. We're just talking about that shared wall, because there's no setbacks between the two residences. You're allowed to have that without a variance. So the main structure has to meet all the ordinance regulations.
And then you can divide it less than the required.
Well, you're not actually dividing the land, you're, you're, well, you're plating off each half.
You would be plating it up, so then, so like, if you were in one district where you got an acre minimum and you put a twin home right in the middle of it and you split it in half, now you gotta plaid it off lot for half an acre and half an acre.
Yeah.
And this is basically saying that's okay, just because you got a zero lot line down the middle, and the main structure meets all the setbacks and everything.
Yep.
So you're basically gonna consider the two residences as one for-
It's one building.
You're considering just the building itself for the setbacks and for the lot size.
And then, let's say they wanted to put on something after-
Still have to meet the setbacks.
That'd be even harder at half an acre.
And the city, the city does it all the time. We just wanted to clear out the ordinance, so there was no confusion about it. But if they want to add a deck or a storage building, they still gotta meet the ordinance setbacks and all that, so. I mean, they know what they're buying when they buy it or build it. So they're stuck or they need to move. But we think this'll make it a lot easier for contractors to build some two-family, multifamily houses, create more housing in a, you know, lary area.
I guess I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to say that that's only allowed in like R two or R three, because kind of the, isn't the idea of all the other, all the districts with the different lot sizes saying that you don't want that dense of housing?
I don't, I don't know, is, is two, twin family or multifamily allowed? Identity? If you look at city, they do, the smaller ones.
I guess it's not in R one.
Yeah, so we're talking, and this happened out at Crestview White Crane, you know, one acre lot, you can easily build a twin home and still make, make it have plenty of room on the outside and look nice. I think there was something Gary had mentioned, though he had sent us suggestions. I don't think in egg, and I don't know if you want to consider that, two-family is allowed, multifamily is not. Did you want to add that?
I guess right now the only place is that it looks to me, it's conditional use and for multifamily in R two and R three, which I guess that's kind of what I would agree with, because-
But R three is high density.
Right, which doing multifamily housing with these zero lot lines would be kind of conducive to high density.
And I think his question, it's not allowed in low density, do you want to include it in low density?
I guess I wouldn't include it in like R one or any of the other districts. Just because the idea is like R one is five acres.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, the idea there is kind of to spread out the housing. That kind of defeats the purpose if you're gonna put one of these kind of things there.
Yep. He just wanted to throw it out there for discussion.
I guess I, I I thought it was a conditional use and more than just R two and R three, but I was wrong, so.
Build twin homes and call them vacation rounds.
Well, if they're gonna do the Airbnb, they still have to do the CUP.
So you have to get a CUP for the multifamily, and then you'd have to get a CUP if you want to use it for vacation rental.
Church or Reynolds, yeah.
Yeah. I guess multifamily is also allowed for conditional use in lakeside commercial.
And I think possibly commercial, too, but not, it's not in commercial, so.
In commercial, it says CUP, well, CUP for both.
On the note, Gary said, yeah.
Yep.
But, you know, whether, I doubt it would fit in commercial.
Commercial is a single family, two-family. Would this qualify as two-family, I guess?
Yeah, twin home.
Okay.
So, so, excuse me, if you don't have any recommendations for changes or anything, we would need a motion to send it on to the county commission.
I'll move you send it down to the county commission.
Second that.
Alright, motion and second. We can do a vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, first plat is East River Electric, lots one and two of Lewis and Clark subdivision, substation addition in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of section fifteen. And in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of section twenty-two, township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM. Yankton County, South Dakota, containing three acres more or less in Utica South Township.
This goes along with their rezone.
I'll move approval of the plat.
I'll second it.
Alright, motion and second. So, but when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Schmidt plat, plat of tracks one and two and lot five of section thirty-two, township ninety-five north, range fifty-five west of the fifth PM. Yankton County, South Dakota, containing forty-eight point one two acres more or less.
I'll move approval of the plat.
Second.
Bill, is this just cleaning up lines or? Schmidt one, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so they had a house over here, a robe dividing it. They wanted to divide it into two tracks and sell off this lot. This is considered a homestead. So it's a smaller, smaller lot, but passed by the five thirteen. So they're cleaning it up and, you know, dividing it up where the road runs through.
I have a motion and a second. We can vote whenever you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Alright, Jensen plat, plat of Harold's Edition in the northeast quarter of section eleven, two ninety-six north, range fifty-five west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
This is another section, homestead. Sure, we got the homestead.
It looks like it's fourteen acres on there.
Fourteen point some odd acres, yeah. Fourteen point two and nine.
I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the plat.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Other questions? Ready for a- Ready for a vote when you are.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Alright. Last agenda item is public comment. Anybody wish to make a final public comment on this meeting? Alright, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.